Alrighty folks, well, good afternoon to you all and thank you for joining us this afternoon. My name is Bruce Clandney and we certainly do welcome all of our participating members with the Kansas Association of Counties that are joining us this afternoon. Looks like we've got about 203 people on board, which indicates that this is a very, very important topic to our members. And so we're so glad that you're able to join us. Like I said, my name is Bruce Clandney and I'm the Executive Director for the Kansas Association of Counties. And it's a pleasure to be working with you as well as working for you. So today, we're going to have a very good presentation by Jay Hall, who's our Legislative Policy Director and Chief Legal Counsel for the Kansas Association of Counties. And you're going to be joining us on the KAC Zoom special meeting called reopen plans for Kansas counties discussion. So as you all know, on Tuesday, May the 26th, Governor Kelly announced in her afternoon press conference that the Ad Astra plan to reopen Kansas will now serve only as guidance for local officials. And so thank you for joining us for a primer on what this means for county commissioners, local health officers, emergency managers, and other county officials. So with that, Jay, I'm going to turn it over to you if you don't mind, unmuting yourself and take over.
All right. Thank you, Bruce, and good afternoon to everyone. Thank you for joining us for this Zoom call. I know that a lot of you had a lot of things going on today, so I appreciate you taking some time out of your day to join us here this afternoon. As Bruce said, I'm Jay Hall. I'm the Legislative Policy Director and also the General Counsel for the Association of Counties. And I've been following all of these different matters as it concerns the legislation that has come out over the last few days concerning COVID-19. So now I'd like to just talk to you a little bit about the governor's order from yesterday and what that does. And then we'll get into some of the executive orders that are still in place. Once we do that, then I'll talk to you a little bit about the special session that's coming up. And then finally, we'll touch on some of the county responsibilities that we need to have in mind as we move forward. So first, taking up the governor's press conference yesterday, as Bruce said, the governor announced that she would veto House Bill 2054, which dealt with her emergency powers, as well as some other provisions that were in that law. She issued a new executive or emergency declaration yesterday that will run for 15 days. So counting from yesterday, that emergency declaration would run all the way until the 10th of June. So we have a little bit of time between now and then for the legislature to either extend that declaration or let that declaration expire. Within that emergency declaration, the governor also announced that 10 of her previous executive orders would continue to be in effect. And those executive orders are as follows. 20-08, which is the executive order that deals with telemedicine. 20-012, which deals with the extension of time for driver's licenses and vehicle registrations. 20-13, which dealt with the income tax deadline. 20-17, which was unemployment insurance. 20-19, that was the professional and occupational licensing. 20-20, which was the remote notary provisions. 20-23, which dealt with adult care home licensing, registration, and certification. 20-27, which was the sale of alcoholic beverages. 20-32, which is the shared work programs. And finally, 20-33, which is the motor carrier rules and regulations. So those 10 executive orders are still in effect as of now, along with the new emergency declaration. As I said, that emergency declaration will expire on June the 10th if they do not remove those declarations. Otherwise, that emergency declaration would expire if it was not extended. Now, having touched on that, it is now time to talk about the special session that is coming up on June the 3rd. That session is to take a look at the emergency management provisions and also to deal with any potential extension of this disaster declaration. And so the legislature will basically come back into Topeka for probably two or three days to take up those provisions. There hasn't been any word yet from either House or Senate leadership about what they are planning on doing. But keep an eye on your emails from KAC. We may have information that we can share once we hear what they are intending to do within those provisions. But for right now, we just know that they're going to have a special session that starts on June 3rd and it will probably run for two to three days. Having touched on the special session, it's now time to really turn to what our focus is going to be for this afternoon. And that's going to be on what counties need to do now that we are in a position where we have the local control that we've been looking for in this particular situation. I know that a lot of counties have already taken steps. I know we have a lot of counties that have already taken steps to issue declarations within their own home counties. And I think it's important that counties issue a local declaration because the statewide declaration is no longer in place. If the statewide declaration expires and you don't have a local declaration in place, that could affect your ability as a local county to get some of the FEMA money and some of the other money tied directly to this disaster. So I would encourage each county commission, particularly those that still have active transmission within your local county, to issue a disaster declaration. And then as well, if you have future cases of COVID, I would encourage you to keep in mind that you would need to issue a disaster declaration at that time, particularly if the statewide disaster declaration is not extended, that you would need to declare a disaster within your locality. Now, the thing with local disaster declarations is that they expire after a very short period of time. So you need to definitely keep an eye on what's going on with your local disaster declaration and whether or not you need to renew those declarations. Because you need to make sure that as long as the COVID-19 situation is progressing within your county, you want to make sure that you have a current disaster declaration that is in effect at the time. So just something to keep in mind, and this is something that commissioners and county administrators, county clerks, all should have in mind. It's something that you may even want to put on your calendar to make sure that you're remembering to renew those disaster declarations in the event that you need to extend those out. Because that is something that could be important with your ability to draw down the federal dollars that are dedicated to this disaster in the event that it continues to extend into the late spring and into the early summer in some places. So that's something that you want to keep in mind. Now, while the Ad Astra plan, as Bruce mentioned, is no longer while the Ad Astra plan is no longer in place as a firm rule, it does still exist as guidance and it is still available on the governor's website. So you can take a look at those and use those items to either frame your own tailored plans or you could also form your own plan if you find that necessary. I just saw a question pop up in the chat about how long local disaster declarations are. I believe it's seven days, so you would need to re-declare those on a weekly basis during your normal commission meeting. So if you're wondering that. But as I said, you can use the Ad Astra plan as a guide or you can create your own plan. And this is really where we, as county officials, have a great opportunity to step forward and really show that we have our hand on the wheel during this particular situation, that we have our hand on the wheel and we have a good handle on what's going on now and on what needs to be done to take care of our local population. So that's something that you can definitely, that you definitely should keep in mind.
Hey Jay, just to take a second here, folks. Okay, there's several questions coming in on the chat. And one of the questions was that the governor had reordered 10 of her executive orders or she renumbered them. Is that what you're seeing too, Jay?
It says here that she may have renumbered them. There was some talk that she was going to renumber them, but I had not seen those renumbered when I was preparing my notes earlier this afternoon.
We will definitely let you know.
That was why I listed out the subject matter as well, because she covered those 10 different subjects within those executive orders.
Okay, and then we're also seeing that during this pandemic, that those declarations are good for 60 days, is what several people have said in the chat box as well.
So yes, and I saw that pop up and I need to look back at that to make sure that it's good for 60 days because I think that was tied to an executive order. And so I need to double check and make sure that that's still available. We can send out some information later on to make sure that those are available for 60 days and that that was not tied to a previous executive order under one of the other disaster declarations that has now expired.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
Sorry, Jay. I will check on that and we will send out some information on that matter. Getting back into the Ad Astra plan, though, as everyone knows, the Ad Astra plan was really put out there as some statewide things and it had stages to it. So currently, the state was in the second stage of the Ad Astra plan and was going to move into the third stage on June 1st. Obviously, that's no longer the case, that there is a statewide plan. But you can still utilize those stages if it seems appropriate for your county. And that's the thing that's really important right now is to make sure that whatever you're doing is appropriate for the situation that's going on in your county, taking into account the number of cases that you have currently, along with the resources that you have. Because a dozen new cases in a large county may be much different than a dozen new cases in a very small county. So keep that in mind as you're looking at your plans. Because as I said, the number of new cases really depends on the size of your population. If you have 10 or 15 new cases in a county with only 2,000 population, that's a much more significant jump than 10 or 15 new cases in a county with 50,000 or 60,000 in population. So that's something that you should keep in mind. But it's also something that's a great opportunity for counties to really show that we have the capacity to lead in situations like this. And I say that particularly because, as you all know, one of the things that we've been pushing for several years has been asking for constitutional home rule. And this is an opportunity for counties to demonstrate that we are prepared to take on the constitutional home rule because we have the capacity to lead in a crisis such as this. And part of that is being able to take on the local challenges that are presented here. And so really, this isn't just a health crisis. This is also an opportunity to demonstrate the ability of counties to take the lead in this type of situation. And I think that we're well-equipped to do that. The last thing that I really want to talk about is making sure that we have not only local control, but also local cooperation. And when I say local cooperation, I mean not only cooperation within the county, but also cooperation with your neighboring counties. Because obviously, this COVID-19 disease doesn't really care about borders and the imaginary lines that we draw between our different jurisdictions. It's able to move across those lines with no real problem. So we need to be cooperating between our counties to make sure that we are aware of what's going on in our neighboring counties and taking that into account. But we also need to make sure that we're cooperating within our counties. And particularly in this case, because of the nature of this particular situation, we need to be cooperating between the commissioners and the health officer and the emergency management director and also with other county officials as they are brought into this situation so that we are all working together and really coming up with a coordinated plan. The best tool that we have right now is the ability to remain organized within the midst of all of this. If we are organized and we set out a plan and we are able to move through that plan in a cooperative manner, that's going to give our citizens a lot more confidence that the situation is under control and that the leaders within their community know what they are doing in this situation. And so I would just encourage everyone to have cooperation within your county, between all of the different county officials, and really work together to make sure that everybody not only has the resources that they need, but also has the information that they need. Obviously, commissioners, as the elected decision makers, are going to be the ones that make the policy decisions. But those decisions should obviously also be made with the information provided by the health officer and with the advice provided by the health officer, with the advice provided by the emergency management director, and with the information provided by other county officials that are working in the county. You may need to be cooperating with your sheriffs and folks like that that are also working on different aspects of this, as they need information as they're working within the county as well. So just make sure that we're sharing that information and make sure that we are getting that information to all of the people that need the information so that we can make the best decisions possible.
Jay, let me jump in here for a second if I may. And just to confirm, just to confirm, that the governor slash the KDHE will not be announcing when the state's guidance is to move to Phase 3 or Phase Out. And then also that decisions are going to be made by the county on their own timeline. So tell us a little bit more about that. If a county does nothing, there's nothing in place, right?
That's correct. So because we are now on local plans only and there is no more statewide plan, if your county was previously operating just under the state's plan, you would need to issue your own plan at this point. Otherwise, you are now operating with no plan. And I would discourage any county from operating with no plan. Even if your plan is to open up in full, I think that you need to make that a formal announcement rather than just proceeding without any sort of plan. And that's just to avoid confusion among your population so that they know what's going on. So even if your plan is, we are going to open up and because we have so few cases or because cases have been trending down or we don't have any cases, even if that is your intent, I think that a formal announcement of that is probably best in this situation so that everyone knows what you are planning to do. In other counties where maybe you don't have a high volume of cases, maybe you move into, rather than staying in the Stage 2 or Phase 2 of what the Ad Astra plan was, maybe you move into Stage 3 or Stage 4 of that plan. Or maybe you loosen the restrictions further or maybe you tailor those things to your community. But I think having a plan and making sure that you notify your population of what that plan is going to be, I think that's beneficial so that everyone knows what they are supposed to be doing and what regulations they are under as you move forward through the rest of this disaster. So I think that it's important that we, as county officials, make sure that not only are we moving forward, but that we're also making sure to articulate what we are doing as we move forward, just so that there's an understanding of what's going on. As I said at the beginning, it's very important that we make sure that our local citizens understand that we, as county officials, are looking out for the situation that's going on because that will give them confidence that things are being taken care of. And the more confidence they have that things are being taken care of, the more likely it is that they will be comfortable going back out and engaging in the kind of commerce that gets the economy restarted and really going.
And so if there was already a plan in place and a county was operating with a plan in place, nothing needs to change, correct? Any sort of continuation or how does that work?
They wouldn't need to necessarily issue any sort of continuation unless, of course, that plan was about to lapse because they put in dates previously. But otherwise, I think just an announcement that they are going back to the countywide plan and possibly refreshing the local citizens on what that countywide plan was, I think that would be adequate in that case. But I think it's important to communicate whatever that is, just so everyone is just because everyone is aware, just so that everyone is aware of what's going on.
Okay. Now, who's responsible for creating the plan? And what's the relationship between the county commissioners and the local county health officer? Who kind of takes the lead and who's in charge and what's that relationship need to look like?
Well, the county commissioners are the county board of health unless they've appointed a separate board of health. But otherwise, the county commissioners are the board of health. So they would be kind of leading that charge, but they should be taking all of that under the advisement of the health officer, obviously, because that's why you have the health officer is to provide that expertise there locally as they're watching the local situation. And then also, obviously, working with your emergency management director that's also able to kind of tell you what resources are available and what resources are being used at that current time. So I think it really is important to cooperate between the county commission and the experts in emergency management and also in the health office to make sure that they are providing them, the county commission, with the information to make those decisions. But to obviously, if there needs to be a local order, then putting that out there or if they're going to relax the local restrictions, also putting that out there.
So let me be 100% clear. Who actually has the final authority to make decisions to enact these plans? Is it the health officer or is it the board of county commissioners serving as the local health board?
The board of health would have the ability to make those final policy decisions.
Okay, okay. Because I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding there going on. So, all right. So are the board of health meetings, are those open meetings? Do those have to be open meetings?
Yes, those will be open meetings.
Okay, so any sort of time that the board of health or the health boards get together, they have to have an open meeting? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Now, is there anything else that you wanted to share about what was going on?
No, I don't think that there's anything else that I had to share. I'm just glad that everyone was able to join. And I just saw a question pop up. It is correct that the health officer can issue orders. And that is correct, that the health officer can issue orders. And other than orders of isolation or quarantine for individuals, the board of health could also step in and issue like countywide guidance on those things. But the health officer can certainly always issue those orders of isolation or quarantine.
Okay. Real quick, in our last two seconds of the call, Jay, I'm putting you on the spot, but do you want to give us a real quick thumbnail sketch of 2702 and where that stands? Which is the old 294 bill?
Yes, I can really quickly. So shifting gears completely and moving into the property tax arena, House Bill 2702 is the bill that had Senate Bill 294 and Senate Bill 295, along with some other items in that bill. And that was passed and has proceeded on to the governor's desk. Obviously, KAC opposed both Senate Bill 294 and Senate Bill 295. When they were originally introduced, our position on those two bills has not changed. We have been supplying the governor's office with information over the last, really over the last week and a half or so, even leading up to last Thursday's session, just kind of making our argument against the bill even before it had passed. We have not yet formally requested a veto, but that is something that we are probably moving in the direction of doing. But we are definitely continuing to monitor this. And again, that was House Bill 2702 was the final bill number. It's the one that deals with the notice and hearing requirements for increasing property taxes and then also deals with some appraiser items. And the provision to extend the grace period for property tax payments for spring 2020 was also included in that bill along with a handful of other.
The ability to develop payment plans, the ability to set up payment plans was also in there.
Yes, and the bill to set up payment plans was also included in the 11th hour.
Okay. Hey Jay, real quick, last question. How does the county enforce these orders? Do they have any authority to do so?
Yes, so the county, if you look in the county, in the health officer statutes, it actually says that both the health officer and the board of health can utilize any law enforcement mechanisms available to them to enforce their orders. And so that means that they could use the county sheriff or city police or any other law enforcement that is there in that jurisdiction. So it's certainly something that is available to them for enforcement purposes. Obviously, I would obviously encourage everyone to look for other remedies other than going straight to the law enforcement purposes. But certainly, that is available if individuals simply refuse to comply by the restrictions that are put out either by the board of health or by the health officer.
Okay. Well, folks, we've come to just about a half hour. Real quick, another piece of this legislation that has been vetoed was the legislators' chance to take over the CARES Act funds that were sent to us from the US Treasury into the state of Kansas. So it's $1.034 billion that the state of Kansas received from the federal government to help fight the COVID battle. And so there is actually an office set up, an Office of COVID-19 Recovery. And we have been reaching out to them to try to get representation on their advisory board, which ultimately we feel is going to be the group that disperses that money back into the community. And we've also been reaching out to you folks. And so we appreciate, we've had about a 50% response rate. Kim Quals in our office is working with folks as they call in or send in their numbers. We're trying to track how much money local county governments are spending on the COVID-19 response efforts, hoping to build a case that we need some of those recovery dollars to cover those costs. To date, we've got just over $7 million that we can account for from about less than half of the counties out there. So if you are not one of the counties that has reported yet, we certainly do appreciate those numbers, keeping track of those expenditures with the hopes that we can get some money from the federal government via the state government to cover some of those costs. And then there's also, as you may well know, there's some other bills going on up in the Senate right now in Washington DC, which actually would allow for loss of revenue. And so we're continuing to follow those and advocate on behalf of you folks. And we certainly reach out to you when we need it, to reach out to our local Kansas delegation at the federal level, making sure that they're on board because eventually we are going to start seeing the revenues drop and we're going to start seeing even more economic decline as this pandemic carries on. So with that, if there's anything else, Jay, from you?
Yeah, I would just say, I know I covered a lot of information really quickly. So if you have questions, feel free to email me. I'll be, obviously, I'm at home, but I'm in the office. And so feel free to email me and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. And also, this recording, this Zoom has been recorded and we will post that recording up onto our KAC website, along with other of the. and we will post that recording up onto our KAC website, along with other the, excuse me, all of the other links that we have already recorded over the past couple of months as well. So you will find this posted in the next 24 hours or so, so you can definitely share that with your colleagues, commissioners, anybody who was not able to be on board, please share a link with them and get them to watch this. And if they have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to us at the KAC. So with that, folks, we appreciate you spending the past 30 minutes with us today, and we wish you all well and safe and speedy recovery, and we hope that Kansas can get on the right track soon. So with that, take care, folks, and have a fantastic afternoon.